This conference will now be recorded.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Welcome to the September 14th, 2021, Tenino City Council Work Session. We have nothing on the agenda for the work session, so we'll just move right into discussion with interim Police Chief Hutchings. He's already given a presentation, but he may want to rehash some of it out, and then the discussion is his recommendations that he's going to make tonight regarding the police chief's future pay scale. So I will hand it over to John Hutchings.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilors. I appreciate the time. I want to thank Councilman John O'Callaghan for again putting on a successful September 11 event for first responders. One of our officers was able to go and took pictures, had a good time, and posted them on Facebook. And back in March or April, long before we were going to come to Tenino, or invited to come back to Tenino for a bit, I purchased tickets to go see The Monkees in Seattle. And there's only two left, so they should have been half-priced tickets, but they weren't. And so my wife and I spent the day and afternoon in Seattle. So sorry, John, that I couldn't make that, but thank you for doing that. We greatly appreciate your love and support, so thank you. I'm going to be referring to the job announcement, the proposed job announcement I will be sending out, the city will be sending out, once I get direction from council. And I believe it was sent to you in a packet also. There it is right there. Thank you. Thank you, John. And the salary survey of our comparables, that was in page two or three of the PowerPoint I sent out a month ago as well, that we talked about and I referred to. But first, I just wanted to just give you a little bit of a background about the biz, the biz background. Being a police officer, the job has changed fundamentally. It's so vastly different than it was in 1980, when I entered the profession. A lot of societal issues, generational issues, and exponentially more difficult and different today with unrelenting scrutinizing from the public, the media, policymakers, special interest groups, the courts, and such. And it's not a bad thing, but it's fundamentally different. So this mandates a thorough and comprehensive vetting of new officers and a police chief. Continued pressure and mandates for additional vetting and training above the 24-hour training mandate per year, that's increasing as well. This makes it difficult to locate and recruit and hire, let alone retain qualified people that want to do the job. If you were up on the news, Seattle Police Department, I don't know if you can probably see the words, but they just entertained two proposals. Get up in there. They had two proposals to spend a million dollars to retain and recruit additional police officers, and both proposals were rejected. And within the last 18 months, Seattle PD alone has lost 200 police officers. So I don't know what this latest news blip, what that's going to do. It just doesn't sound like it's going to bode very well for retention and recruitment of police officers, let alone a police chief. This is really a tough time in the United States, especially in Washington, I would say, to recruit and be the lead of any, the head of any police or law enforcement organization at this time. Very, very challenging. And I applaud any man or woman that wants to take that on. I looked at salaries online, salaries by years of experience, years of experience in Washington State. And if you have three to five years, this is average, three to five years of police experience in Washington State, you're earning 64, about $64,000 a year. If you have one to two years of law enforcement experience, you're earning $56,562 per year. And in Tenino, once you top out, three or four years, or five years or more, the top step is $55,000, another $1,000, $1,300 less than the other average. And it makes it difficult, it makes for a revolving door in law enforcement in small cities. Referring to the job announcement, what I did in the very top is I included a 15% increase in the step pay scale for police chief. Currently, it is $53,640 a year, and tops out at $66,840 per year as a police chief. By increasing it by 15%, it increases to $61,688 rather than $53,640. And the top step right now is $66,800, I'm rounding, and it would go to $76,870 a year. It increases the monthly pay from $4,470 a month. I know I'm throwing a bunch of numbers out, and I can clarify if I need to. Right now, the starting chief in Tenino would earn $4,470 a month. With a 15% increase in pay, the chief would make $5,140. And then commensurate all the way up to the top, topping out it right now currently is $5,570 a month for the police chief. With the increase of 15%, it's $6,405 per month. So it doesn't, when you look at it monthly, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it all adds up. I understand that. I think it's our collective desire as a city and as policymakers to recruit a qualified pool of candidates, not just locally, but regionally, however regionally is, from which we can choose the best candidate to be the chief of police for the city of Tenino, the great city of Tenino, if you will. And it's a difficult decision that council needs to make, because you're still looking at, I would reckon, or I would suppose you'll be looking at COLA's, longevity pay, base salary to recruit and retain other employees and such. You're in a tough spot, knowing that you have limited resources with which to deal with. With that, I'm ready and willing to take any questions that anybody may have regarding this topic. But I'm asking respectfully that I be allowed to put in the 15% increase in the salary for the police chief, and then it would go out tomorrow, if it's approved, it will go out as soon as possible. And it has already been built into our projected budget for next year that we've already submitted. So it obviously can be massaged. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Chief Hutchings?
Not questions, but I do want to say, when I first became a council in 96, we had a problem with pay for police. And they tried to do the exact same thing, to go with comparables. What I do want to do is caution on comparables. It gives you some kind of a baseline. But for example, DuPont, I went off of percentage of how much the city was paying for law enforcement. DuPont was pretty close to what we were. We were at 51, they were at 53. The difference between DuPont and us, even though it looks like they're about the same size and everything, is that they had a much greater tax base. The amount of money that they were able to take in was a lot more than we were able to. We're getting to that point now because of the Ag Park, when that finally goes in, and once that happens, and then the Equestrian Center, once that really gets running. So the 15%, I'm not saying right now, because we're not in the discussion of saying yes or no, is actually not a bad increase. I think we can handle it as time goes on, and I think we can handle it starting right now. But comparables for police departments from city to city, jurisdiction to jurisdiction, even if you had a city the exact same size as Tenino, there's a whole bunch of different variables that go into it. So take that in mind when you're deciding whether you're going to vote yes or no on the 15%, please. It is important, not just to us, and not just to the citizens, but to the officers as well, because the way officers are being treated these days is just absolutely ridiculous. And this little bit of a carrot could help. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I just want to point out that this is solely for the chief's position. So this is looking at the salary for the chief position, and we're asking, you know, we need a commitment from council if we're going to, you know, we would be building the 2022 budget to carry this. So we would anticipate hiring around the first of the year-ish, and this would take effect essentially then, kind of. So we need to commit to it, and then it allows us to kind of build the rest of the budget around it, kind of, in a sense. We do feel that we can take it, that we can afford this pay increase, and, you know, I think that we'd be wise to listen to Chief Hutchings' recommendations. He's come in, he's done a lot of research, he's looked on it, looked in on it, and this is what he's telling us we should do if we want to be able to recruit somebody. So when the meeting happens, we would just be asking for a motion to support these recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor, for pointing that out. And when you, Councilor O'Callaghan, said we can afford it now, I just want to be very clear to the public, this does not impact my salary at all. This is solely for a new police chief, whoever he or she is, does not have any way, no impact or bearing on me in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I don't know. I just think this is extremely important, and it would be, in my view, it would be very important for the city of Tenino to step up for our police department and be one of the few in the state that actually do so.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say that too, John. If we want a really great candidate, I think this is really needed for our city. So I, yeah, I am for this.
Yeah, thank you, sir. And you're right, several people calling and kind of kicking the tires locally. And when I tell them what the current salary is, they don't laugh, because they're being very respectful. They say, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So for the rest of the work session, I'd like to move into, we'll just move right into reports. And I could start by introducing your new clerk treasurer, Kayleen Canup. She did join us before. You were at the last meeting, if I remember correctly. I don't know. My days are running together, because I'm doing these all from work.
I was not at the last meeting.
You weren't. We voted on appointing you. So I'll just go right into it. This is your first chance, giving a clerk treasurer report. So no pressure, just kind of, you just kind of let the council know what you've been up to, and what you're working on, and you know, kind of what's on your desk. So now it's time to shine.
There's a lot on my desk. No, I'm joking. Anyway, I'm just solely working on the budget. I've been doing bank reconciliations. I'm also in the process of getting access to all the different websites, like EFTPS and Department of Revenue and Department of Retirement SAW, which is through employment.
I see you talking.
Doing so far.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Kayleen? Okay, we have another new employee that I believe is on with us. Let me look. Rainey, are you there?
I'm here, Wayne.
Okay. So Mr. Rainey Durand is the new city building official, code enforcement officer and public works employee. So I'd like to introduce him to council and give him an opportunity to let you guys know who he is and what he's working on. So go ahead, Rainey.
He's muted.
You got to unmute your mic, bud. Rainey, you there?
Mr. Mayor, while he's unmuting, can I just tell you that Rainey helped us at the police department and got that speed sign up and got it working coming into Tenino off 99 by the school.
It says he's offline now, so he must have cut it out or something.
Chief, I noticed today it wasn't working.
Yeah, we need to change the battery. It's been a good week.
Okay. Okay, let's just go down the list with the reports, and if he comes back, he comes back. Chamber of Commerce, George is attending the Yukota City Council meeting tonight, as they renamed Yukota as Buukota. So he would give the C report as well. Fire Department 12, is there a report?
No report.
I think you said no report. Museum, Tenino Community Service Center, Jim, you're with us.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me? We will be having a shock clinic tomorrow, noon to four. They seem to be getting very well attended. Again, Chief Hutchinsons, we will have security there evidently. But I do need to say that Tenino so far has behaved themselves without having to cause any kind of issues for these guys that are out there doing a service to the community. Other than that, that's all we got.
Dottie, that's two to four?
It is noon to four, and it is, yes, it is at the Corey House.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to have to go on a fire call, so that cancels this meeting. Yeah, just say, yeah. We're going to see if another guy can take that call. Linda's in, Linda's out of town, so she's unable to chair the meeting. Okay, all right, Hutch, your report.
That's it. The chief recruitment and Rainey got to sign up, and that's it.
Okay. Kayleen gave her report. Mine, we've been trying to onboard Kayleen, we've been working on that. We had a department head meeting the other day that went very well, and we're starting doing those more regularly than now, now that the positions are filled. And then just working with staff. Things are going well. As far as public works, they're near completion of... They're near completed with our portion of the construction of the parking lot behind Sandstone Cafe. And we have an asphalt contractor that should be beginning construction very soon. And some of the local businesses have also contacted the contractors, so they can do their portion behind the business. It's going to look real nice. And now kind of everybody's looking at additional renovations that they can do to make the backside look good. We brought on Rainey. He's been doing, he's been getting online with code enforcement and building official duties. He has some classes in Vancouver coming up, I want to say in October, to get certified. Somebody sent me something. They begin paving on Thursday, so that's good news. City Hall renovations are going well. We kind of lit the fires on the contractors, and if you were to go to City Hall right now, the bottom floor is demolished too. So they took out some walls, redoing the lunchroom down there, and they've started to put together upstairs. So it's pretty exciting, and it's going to look really nice when we all come back. Corey House's NEPA is done, and we should go in construction, or go out to bids for the Corey House soon. And I believe we have some quotes from some bidders for the pool, and that's being worked on. Be that.
They don't have any listing of their upcoming meetings, so no report right now.
Okay. We have nobody on solid waste since Cutter left, steady, that would be George. Tenino School Board, Rachel.
Next meeting is next week, so no report.
Okay. TRPC, Transportation Policy Board, John, do you have a report? I think maybe... Okay. All right, that's the end of reports. Rainey, are you...
Go ahead with Rainey if he's back.
Okay, Rainey, are you able to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I don't think I can do the video. I got technical difficulties with the internet out here where I live, so.
Okay, talk to us.
All right, so Wayne got, I'm sorry, the mayor got me on here at the beginning of August. Since then, I've been doing a lot of studying and researching on the town ordinances for the city of Tenino, sorry, the city of Tenino's ordinances. I issued out seven citations in the month of August, ranging anywhere, most of them were just excessive trash, and a couple of permits where people were out there doing construction work without permits on their houses. And everything that I did issue out came back, and everybody took care of the business that I asked them to. As of now, this month, I'm focusing on looking at other areas of the city that I've noticed as I've been driving around that have abandoned cars on the sides of the roads and trailers that aren't supposed to be parked on streets. And then coming up here in October, the mayor's got me going to two seminars to get my certifications for residential building inspector and also for permit issuing. Is anybody have any questions for me?
Okay, thank you. The other thing that I failed to mention is we did begin our septic receiving program. So we had Goble Septic, we brought them online, we're in contract with them to receive their effluent from their septic trucks, and so far it's going well. They bring in a full truck, we make about 500 bucks in 10, 15 minutes. They, you know, I don't know the exact numbers, I've been told them, but, you know, when we're going full speed, which we'll be up and running full speed soon, there will be multiple trucks that can go throughout there through the day, and it will be, you know, a new revenue stream for the sewer plant, which is awesome news.
Okay, one thing that I want to talk about, say for the new building inspector, you brought up junk cars. Please be real careful, because the laws for Washington State are pretty strange. What we would look at and say, that's a junk car, the state itself may not agree with you. I know, because I was a lobbyist for tow truck drivers a long time ago. For example, one of the things is, if the headlight is worth more than what the car looks like it's worth, it's not a junk car. So be careful when you approach the junk car bit, okay? Thank you.
As well as considered someone's home by the court as well. Yeah.
Do you have something else?
I just want to thank, you know, we keep hearing about the great city of Tenino, and it is a dad gum, outstandingly great city. I'm the president of the board for Habitat for Humanity for South Sound, and we had an auction just a couple weeks ago, and the sandstone carvers, both Tony and Keith, donated art that they had made, the Sandstone Distillery, Iron Works, the Glass Repurpose Center in town, the IGA Market, Don Wans, and the farrier, Otis Curry, that has a shop right next to the same building as the stone carvers, all contributed. Everybody just jumped in, and we were able to make several thousands of dollars. I just want to thank Tenino and its supporters.
Awesome. All right, we'll take a five-minute recess and then come back to the council meeting. Thank you.
Chief, you and I should talk about Habitat. I've given them many different ideas, but they've had such a turnover in the executive director position, I'm sure that the board never heard any of them. For example, one of the ideas that I had, especially for the store, is have a black tie event. The black tie is a feature, black, and it's all done up like a suit, you know, a tuxedo type of a deal. And when you wear that to the store, you get a 15% discount.
We had a follow-up meeting today, a Zoom meeting this morning, and it was somewhat similar, was brought up, let's have an event at the store, because it introduces people to the store, there's plenty of parking, and whatever the event is, it gets other people to go through the store. If you have something in the parking lot, it gets people through the store anyway. And whether or without a discount, they're exposed and may buy more. But that's an excellent idea.
Well, so one of them finally did make it to you guys.
Yes, that's wonderful. I wrote it down. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I heard you had pretty good turnout, though, for the Saturday.
Yeah, it was nice. You know, it was a steady flow. I have no idea how many people actually showed up, so I have to go buy food. And there was less leftover food this time than there have been in the past. So that's a good sign.
That's a very good sign.
We had a judge show up, we had a couple county commissioners show up, we had some of the fire commissioners from other districts show up. So it was nice.
Very good, very, very good.
And it helped out the museum quite a bit, too, because I kept pushing people over to the museum.
You got to push it. All right, I'll be right back. All right, I'll be right back.
All right. Are we recording?
It said it was.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the September 14th, 2021 Tonino City Council meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of council member Godovak. So we will need an excusal for her during the consent calendar. So if you want to add that in the agenda. But first, please stand forward, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to agenda approval.
No approval.
Second.
Do we get a
We need to, we need to add to the consent calendar, the permission or excusal for Linda Godovak missing this meeting. This way, it's not counted against her.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented with the addition of excusal of council member Godovak to the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That brings us to approval of minutes for the August 24th, 2021 meeting.
I'm moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That brings us to consent calendar consisting of August 25th, 2021 through September 14th, 2021. This one's a little different, so bear with me. This is for payroll EFTs in the amount of $24,199.85. Our checks are on back orders, so there are currently no checks to sign. We ordered them a month ago. The bank forgot to get them ordered, so they're going to, but we're asking for council to approve the expenses. And then when the checks get in, we'll issue them and make them available to sign. So checks are on back order, they're expected to arrive on the 20th and we printed out and sent for the attached account payables. This be claims check number 30090 through 301 XX and EFT amounts in the, in the amount of $201,625.93 for a grand total of $225.825.93 along with liquor license for the Eagles, Tonino gas and food, and excusal of council member Godovak's absence.
Due to the fact that we already have the report on what the expenses were, move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That brings us to, we have no executive session, no presentations. If there is anyone in the public that would like to provide comment, now is your time. You'll be given three minutes. Please state your name and address. I do not see any members of the public going once, going twice, moving along, no public hearings. Tonight's proclamation is brought to you by National Voter Registration Day. If you would pull that up, I don't see that on, where's that at? Not see a copy of the proclamation.
Hope you just passed it. National Voter Registration Day, there you go.
This is proclamation of National Voter Registration Day. Whereas registering to vote empowers eligible citizens to extend their rights, to exercise their rights to vote on Election Day. And whereas the city of Tonino is committed to strengthening democracy by encouraging voter registration and increasing participation in all elections. Whereas civic-minded people and organizations collaborated to establish September 28th, 2021 as National Voter Registration Day. And whereas the goal for the 2021 National Voter Registration Day is to create awareness of elections and motivate eligible citizens to vote coming months. And whereas the strength of our democracy depends on the willingness of the citizens. Now therefore resolved in this day and Tonino and city hereby recognizes September 28th, 2021 as National Voter Registration Day. I'd like to entertain a motion from the council.
So entertained.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the proclamation for National Voter Registration Day. Is there any discussion?
Yes, at the, whereas the second one where it says strengthening democracy, I wish it would have said strengthening our republic.
Good, thank you. Hearing no further comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. That brings us to new business. I would call this old business. Interim Police Chief John Hutchings, Tonino Police Chief briefing. He briefed us in the work session, review and discuss police chief wage increase. So it has been presented in two meetings, the recommendations. He is, the chief is, interim chief Hutchings is recommending a 15% increase in the police chief wage. If you all adopt this tonight, that'll give him the ability to start advertising the position tomorrow.
No approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt or accept Chief Hutchings' recommendations for wage increase to the police chief position. Is there any discussion?
Yes, it's 15%, sounds like it's a whole lot and we normally don't take such what looks like drastic steps. But when you do the actual math, it is a very modest increase. So I wholeheartedly support this.
Thank you, sir.
As do I, as do I. This is a good thing for the city and for great candidates to come in here to apply.
Thank you, council member.
I 100% agree. You, we need it.
All right, let's vote on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief Hutchings, for all the hard work.
Thank you, man, thank you council very, very much. That means a lot.
Next on the agenda, modifications. We need to remove clerk treasurer Becky Anderson from the bank accounts and add new clerk treasurer Kailene Canop to all bank accounts.
No approval.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve to remove Becky Anderson and add Kailene Canop to back, bank accounts. Any discussion?
Just so the public knows, this is basic housekeeping. We have a new clerk, so we have to do all that kind of stuff to make sure she can do her job.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Next on the agenda, item seven, discuss changes for park hours and camping dates. Police and Public Works would like to have posted park open times dusk till dawn. Camping, they would like to change opening to Memorial Day weekend and close right after Labor Day weekend anyway. This would need to change in our ordinance. So what we need to do is we need to draft, we need to, we need to pull out some staff. Kailene, we need to pull this ordinance out and we need to draft the changes. And then we need to bring it to council. But first, we're looking for any feedback from council.
First off, are you looking for an approval?
Nope, we have to have
Decision, yeah. If, if you want, you can call Lacy because that's how they handle their parks. It's from dusk to dawn.
What are, what are the hours right now? Sorry to cut you off, John, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Can I chime in something? Sorry. Just like, from what we're dealing with, with Public Works, there's no posted hours right now at all. And so like our officers can't go in and tell anyone, you don't need to be loitering around here or doing all this when they're, they're after dark because there's no, there is no posted hours right now. So it's been something they've really been really wanting to do for a long time. And Sergeant Sharp came with these ideas. And that's kind of where it stemmed from, the camping, you know, summertime makes sense. So that way, we hope to keep anyone trying to stay too long term from doing that. It's just actually campers camping. So, that's it.
Okay, so I'll work with staff and we'll come back with an ordinance to present you guys that would have the new language on it. And then it'll be ready to discuss, adopt, change, modify, what have you. And so we're gonna keep moving on. We have no resolution, resolutions. And we've gone over our reports. So that is the meeting. Is there any public comment? I'm gonna tell Linda I beat the record time.
None, none, this one, never mind.
All right.
Unbelievable, the motion.
Meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Goodbye.